This is the Good Government Show.
Well, we have to let people know that we have to grow in order to survive. If we don't grow, we're dying. We can't have our community die. We need our county to grow. I also take government to the people. So in our community, we have these more rural areas that it's harder for them to get into town where our county courthouse is located. And I actually go to them once a month. I go out to their communities when they have their neighborhood watch meetings and talk to them and bring government to them. So not always can they get to us. So I want to take government to them. And I do that in three different communities in my county. The community, I would say, because I'm inspired by the community to continue to work. Because every time you think, oh, you know, you're getting beat up by the citizens, and then you'll run into someone who says, oh, thank you for doing this. If you didn't do this, we wouldn't be able to do this, or I wouldn't be able to do that. So I think the community.
Welcome to the Good Government Show. I'm your host, Dave Martin. On this episode, we're heading back to my new favorite state, West Virginia. If you're a regular listener, and I hope you are, you know I've made a few trips to West Virginia, and I continue to be captivated by all things West Virginia. The Appalachian Mountains, the hollers, the history, and mostly the great people I've met. There's a saying, "You always meet a friend in West Virginia." Well, today, we're meeting someone who's a friend to pretty much everyone in her county, and that's Lewis County Commissioner Agnes Queen. Oh, and yes, she is a real queen. She was our high school's homecoming queen. She calls herself very approachable. And she says sometimes when she goes out to the local store, she will spend hours staying in one place while people come up and talk to her. A few updates since I recorded this show. It appears that one company she talked about moving into Lewis County and creating jobs is moving forward with plans and will add some 50 jobs. Another company she mentioned, this one in the agriculture industry, is also moving forward with plans for a new location in the county. Job growth is needed in Lewis County. Lewis County is in central West Virginia. As with much of the state, Lewis County is banking on tourist dollars to help grow the local economy. One way they're doing that is with a new highway that will spur increased travel from the Washington DC area. You may not think of West Virginia as a tourist destination, but it is becoming one. We talked at the state's historic resort, the Greenbrier. The state's second largest resort, the Stonewall Resort, is in Lewis County in Roanoke. I've seen tourist dollars come into West Virginia at the state's most famous resort, the Greenbrier, and the nation's newest national park, the New River Gorge. I won't go into the Hatfield and McCoy story again, but I did meet ATV riders at the Hatfield Family Cemetery. Tourism is working in West Virginia. Back to Commissioner Queen. She just won her fourth six-year term as county commissioner. She was also selected to be on the governor of West Virginia's Property Valuation, Training and Procedures Commission, and this is a group that reviews county property, tax assessors, budgets, and spending. So listen, as we head back to West Virginia, that's coming up after this. The Good Government Show is sponsored by OurCo. That means our community. OurCo has found a way to make government more effective. OurCo provides the O-U-R platform, and this is an app that blends in-person and digital interactions to connect people with their government, their county, their town, their state. The OurCo app transforms meaningful conversations into reliable data. They can turn results into projects and programs the community has essentially already approved. It's sort of like a flash poll by phone, but without the call and in real time. And wherever community members are, maybe they're at their house, or their office, or where they're out just talking about local issues. Maybe the choice is between putting in more local buses or expanding the bike lanes. OurCo can get you an answer immediately. With O-U-R, you can engage your citizens or any group, learn what they want, and build programs and policies that advance your county, your job creators, your constituents. So visit OurCo.com, that's O-U-R-C-O dot com, and learn how they do it. And while you're there, book a demonstration. Welcome to the Good Government Show. I have with me a guest from West Virginia. We're at the Rural Action Caucus in Greenbrier in White Sulphur Springs, West Virginia. Introduce yourself to the audience and tell us where you're from.
My name's Agnes Queen. I'm a county commissioner from Lewis County, West Virginia, which is nearly in the southern part or the middle part of the state.
The middle-southern part of the state?
Yes.
And so tell me what's going on in Lewis County? What are the issues you're working on?
Currently, we're working on trying to get sewer and water, which is always a big, you know, issue in the state of West Virginia. But we're focusing right now on the infrastructure for Corridor H, which is a highway that will connect Washington-
A highway. You're building a highway?
No, we're trying to get the infrastructure that's going to be along the highway that's going to be built in West Virginia. And it's actually already built in my county.
Okay.
So depending on which end of that highway coming from Washington DC, either you're where the beginning or where the end of it.
So why do you need a highway?
The highway is going to open up tons of visitors from Washington DC into the center of the state of West Virginia, which is going to be instrumental to growing our community in Lewis County, West Virginia. We're literally right in the middle of the state of West Virginia off of I-79 and Corridor, which is Washington DC would be 48 and West Virginia is 33. But they are changing the name, the corridor to 48.
It'll all be uniform.
It'll all be uniform, correct.
So I've spent, I was, my first visit to West Virginia was a couple of years ago. Since then, I've sort of kept my eye on things that are happening here in the state. And I know that there is a transition really going on in the state. And one of the things that seems to be driving the new West Virginia is tourism, especially outdoor stuff. So is that accurate? And what are people coming to your county for?
Yes, we actually have one of the larger resorts in the state of West Virginia next to the Greenbrier. Greenbrier being the largest, and then ours is Stonewall Resort, which has a large conference center, outdoor recreation, boating, skiing. It's 2,000-
Why aren't I staying there tomorrow night?
Right, exactly. You need to. It's not as, this one's more older looking, and this one's, ours is more modern.
All right. So what brings people to the, just other than that fact that it's a beautiful resort? What are they coming for?
They fish, they hunt, they hike, they bike. There's a lake that they, they boat on the lake.
What do you do? Which of those things do you do?
Boating is what I do. My husband golfs, because there's also a golf course there. And we camp, there's a campground there. So I know it's in my community, but it's right on the lake. It's close to home, so-
What's your boat? What do you have?
Pontoon.
Oh, that's a great on a lake.
Yes, pontoon.
It's like having a big giant wet bar.
Right, exactly, exactly. So it's phenomenal. And when we camp, we're close enough with our jobs to be able to still go to work if we need to. If there's something, we still work when we're on vacation, or when we're camping, or whatever. And within that actual facility, camping-wise, you still have the amenities of broadband and internet and things of that nature.
What does having a highway mean to the citizens of Lewis County?
It is going to bring growth that we need, and we know that. We actually have a hospital also being built at that intersection of Corridor H and I-7933, which is also going to be another anchor for us. Our county has just over 17,000 residents. We are one of eight counties that actually had a population increase in the state of West Virginia. So we're able to boast that we also had an increase in population. With this new, with this new hospital moving to that area, as well as a corridor opening, it's going to bring the numbers up for us to be able to capture growth, which we desperately need to help with our job creation for more people to move to our community to be able to have jobs.
I know that a lot of the economy in West Virginia was based on the coal industry. How did that affect your county? Were you a coal-producing county? Or were you a coal-supporting county?
We do receive some coal severance. There used to be coal in Lewis County years and years ago. But once they built the Stonewall Jackson Dam and the lake, there's no, you're no longer allowed to mine coal in my county at this point. Our county's always been a oil and gas county. So we depend on the oil and gas industry in Lewis County.
Okay.
And glass at one time. Glass industry was huge.
The glass industry. What did they make?
They made all kinds of glass that they sent all over the world. So it was Princess, I don't know if you've heard of Princess Glass? They were one of the bigger ones in the area. But we used to have two actual glass factories in my county, which have since closed because all that industry was moved overseas.
So what do the folks do in your county for work?
A lot of people work in oil and gas. A lot of people work at local hospitals. We have a mental institution in our community as well, Sharp Hospital, where a lot of forensic patients unfortunately go, and a lot of mentally ill patients go. So that's one of our top employers. And again, the oil and gas industry is still there. Not as grand as it was, but it's coming back. So we have a lot of people in those industries, as well as the school system.
And what do you think this road will change? The highway will change?
I believe it's going to bring bigger industry, a lot of companies. We actually do have some companies looking at us now, a factory and a plant are both. We're currently looking for land for those individuals in our community. One will bring 50 jobs, the other one's going to bring hundreds of jobs. So we're excited about those things. And of course, right now, we're under, we can't really talk a lot about them or who they are.
Yeah, but, well, how do you, how does one manage? It sounds like you're anticipating growth, but how do you manage growth, especially in a sort of a more rural setting where there's a lot of folks that are there because it's not growing? How do you manage that?
Well, we have to let people know that we have to grow in order to survive. If we don't grow, we're dying. We can't have our community die. We need our county to grow. And we have had that instance where people have moved here from Maryland, or they've moved from Washington DC, and they like it like it is, and they don't want it, but you know-
I'm here, close the door.
Right, exactly. But they want water and sewer, even though they moved in the woods. So, and we can't afford to put water and sewer into the woods. You moved there, you didn't have it when you went there. And if we don't have business growing in our community, help with the tax base, we're never going to get it to you, so.
So have you become a water and sewer expert of some level?
Yeah, it's been, it's been very interesting, yes. Yes, we've, we've had the tackle back-
How does one learn about that? What's your, what's your background?
Marketing and public relations, not water and sewer.
Nothing to do with water and sewer?
Nothing to do, a lot of meetings, going to a lot of trainings. I go to a lot of things like this to learn more about what's going on. And also, when we're working with the water and sewer industry, those folks coming in, and the contractors, or the developers, and the engineers, go to those meetings and sit and see, understand what's actually happening.
And is that enough to-
It's never enough.
For your education?
It's always growing. You're always learning something.
Okay. And you know more about water and sewer than you ever thought you'd know?
Yes, I do. I do, definitely.
What have you learned? What's the, what's the, what's the big takeaway?
Well, the big takeaway is when you're working with engineering firms who are designing the plan itself, make sure when they give you a list to call individuals to sign up for water, that the people on the list actually can receive the water. Because that happened to me recently, where I called and got an entire road, signed up for water, and then was told that, oh, but they're not in the scope of project. Well, then why did you give me the list that had their names on it? So, you know, so that's been fun.
Is this growth management an issue that is, that you're dealing with every day? You know, kind of almost, I mean, is it, is it what people are talking about in your county?
Yes, it is. It's something that we feel like we're, we're behind the game. We're feeling like we're trying to get to the finish line before the hospital's built, before the corridor is completely open, so that we don't miss out. We feel like we're missing out on opportunities that we really need in our community. So we're just gung ho, trying to do everything we can. We applied for earmark funding, and we were actually awarded, or moved through the process, both by our Senators Manchin and Senators Capito. But when it came down to the funding organization, the committee, we were turned down.
And what do you say to the people who's, you know, like, no, don't build that. No, I don't want that. No, you know, keep it the way it is. I like it rural. What do you say to those folks?
Again, we tell them, in order for us to grow and for our communities to survive, we have to have economic development and growth with jobs that pay.
Does that satisfy them?
They understand. Of course, you've always got the naysayers, the keyboard warriors, especially on social media. Facebook's a big-
Keyboard warriors.
Keyboard warriors, yes. And funny enough, they're the same people that complain. I tell them, I tell you, you could give them a million dollars and they'd find a reason to complain. It wasn't small bills. Why didn't I get it yesterday? You know, why wasn't it more? They'd find a reason.
All right. What are the people most excited about?
People most excited about just being able to have a job that they can actually survive on. That's a big issue in our county. Housing is a big issue. We're lack of housing. The housing that we do have really isn't suitable. The cost is extremely high to rent or to buy homes in our community. Because of where we're at, everybody thinks their property's worth a goldmine.
All right. Right now, you're listening to the Good Government Show. At Valley Park Productions, we've expanded. If you want to hear more good government, join me over on a new show I'm hosting, Leading Iowa: Good Government in Iowa Cities. I host the show with the mayor of Dubuque, Iowa, Brad Kavanaugh. On our show, we talk with mayors and other city leaders across the state of Iowa. We talk about what makes each city a distinctly Iowan city. We share ideas with mayors around the state. We talk about what works and how each city can do better. It's an up-close look at what's going on in Iowa and how the city's leaders are making Iowa better for the people in Iowa every day. There's a few fun facts. We talk baseball in Dyersville, Iowa. That's the site of the actual baseball field for Field of Dreams. There's a lot to Iowa. Come listen, right here we're listening now, to Leading Iowa: Good Government in Iowa Cities with me and Brad Kavanaugh. See you there. So now we're going to get to the heart of politics.
Okay.
The heart of your, the heart of your philosophy on government. All right, here we go. Are you ready for this?
Okay.
All right, unscripted. All right, here we go. You're a county commissioner. You've been a county commissioner for, you said-
Seventeen.
Seventeen years. From where you said, define good government.
Good government, I truly believe, is someone that listens to the people. You have to listen. You have to be open to meeting with them or talking with them. I actually have several pages on Facebook, because that's, I'm the Facebook guru in our county. The person every-
Are you?
Yes, the person everybody goes to to find out what's happening, what's going on in our community. And I strive to make sure that that, whatever is told or put out there is the truth. So I try to get the information to the people, and I also take government to the people. So in our community, we have these more rural areas that it's harder for them to get into town where our county courthouse is located. And I actually go to them once a month. I go out to their communities when they have their neighborhood watch meetings and talk to them and bring government to them. So not always can they get to us. So I want to take government to them. And I do that in three different communities in my county, as well as regardless of when they contact me on Facebook. If it's at 2 o'clock in the morning and I'm up, I'll respond.
Now, I gather that you are the Facebook guru because you are the youngest county commissioner?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, or had been, yes.
You had been.
We do have another one that's just a little bit younger, but he's too busy. He's an auctioneer as well.
But you said when you were elected, you were the youngest elected?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Youngest elected, what else?
In my county, and the first woman to be elected as a county commissioner in my county.
What, why do you think they supported you, being both young and a woman and never having had that before?
Well, I had a son. Actually, he was two years old when we started campaigning, and he would go with me and talk to everyone, and he wanted to hand out my information. And I think that people saw that I had a reason that I would work hard to make things happen and change in my county.
Does he still work on your campaigns?
Yes, he does, but-
Does he knock on doors?
He hates to do it. He's in college right now. He just started college. But he's not a big fan of being an I, but he would go with me everywhere when I was campaigning. And even at some meetings when he was little, or that I could take him to, he would go Rotary Club meetings, you know, fair and festival meetings, things like that. He would be able to attend with me.
So how do you judge your success? What do you use as your personal, you know, yardstick?
Yardstick. Just the fact that people continue to come to me for information and for assistance and for help. So I feel like that as long as they're coming to me and asking, you know, that's a good thing, that they trust me. So I feel if they trust me, that's, that's a good thing.
So if people don't feel like they're getting good government, or the government that they want, what should they do?
They should actually reach out to the local government, get involved. I tell people all the time, if you don't like what's happening, get involved, whether it's the government or the local committee. It is hard. It is hard.
So what do you do with that case?
I tell them to research. I do a lot of, like I said, take government to them. If they want to find out what's going on, contact me. I'll come meet with you. I'll come and meet with you. I'll talk to you on the phone, whatever works best for the individual. I'll be willing to help them.
How should they hold you accountable, other than, you know, an election every four years?
Let me know if we're not doing things properly. You know, let me know. Come to me and tell me what you would like to see happen, or why I'm, what I'm doing you don't think is right. And I'll tell you what I can and can't do. A lot of times, people think that we do things that we can't. Like I get a lot of, people contact me for what's happening in a city. And I always respond to them and say, I'm sorry, that is not what I do. But this is who you need to speak to. I'm sorry that it's not my control, because they have their own form of government. But this is the information, this is the phone number. But if you don't get the results you want, contact me again, and I'll find someone else who can.
Okay. You're an elected official. You've been there for 20-
Seventeen.
Seventeen years, sorry, 17 years. What would you like people to know about how government works?
Government has, each form of government has its own rules and its own government governing body. Again, a lot of people do not understand. They think county commission does everything, at least in my county. They think that we're responsible for roads. In West Virginia, we don't do roads. We don't do bridges. City does, county does not. We're not in charge of the school system. A lot of people think that we are. We're not over the school board. We're not over the state. You know, we have our own issues. And a lot of times, that's the thing, get to know what government does and which form of government you need to be working with. I'm always happy to help, try to get people to understand that.
Do you do any outreach to sort of explain what it is you do do?
Yes, I do. And a lot of times, I'll send up, several times a year, I'll actually do on social media, education to people to let them know, this is what we do. This is what the city and the town and, you know, each form of government. This is who, what they are, and what they do, and how you can reach them.
Have you found social media to be an effective form of communication for you?
Yes, it has been. And again, it's so that I can, no matter what time of day, or if I'm in a meeting or whatever, they can inbox me or tag me on a post, and I'll eventually be able to get back to them and answer their questions and the needs that they have. So they tell me a lot that I'm a very approachable.
Well, I was going to ask about that. Do you have a hard time going shopping? Or going to, you know, walking into the local grocery store or diner?
Yes, actually, one time I went to Walmart, and I was there three hours. I made it to the front door, and I was standing in the clothing section by the registers. And the workers went back and forth, and they came back. They said, you were standing there when I went to lunch. I'm like, I know. Because as fast as one person would leave, somebody else would come out.
Do you mind?
No, not really. As long as I'm not going to, you know, have to be someplace, I'm happy to help any way that I can.
So who is your political hero? Who inspires you, or who inspired you to run? And who inspires you now?
The person who most inspired me was my friend Kathy Snuffer. She was a fantastic person. Yeah, well, she's passed away.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
She was, passed away at a very young age. She was 54 when she passed away.
Okay.
And, but she's the one who actually talked me into running for office and has always been my mentor.
Did she talk you into it, truly?
She did, truly, truly talked me into-
Why did she think that you should do it?
She just felt that I cared enough about the community that I would actually work hard for the local people to get done what they needed to be done.
And did she work on your campaign or manage your campaign?
She, behind the scenes, did a lot of stuff. Yes, she did.
All right. Agnes, you're messing up. Here's what you need to do. Is that what she said, stuff like that?
Yeah. She said, this is where you need to go to, and this is who you need to talk to. So I had a list of individuals that they felt that were connected enough that I needed to speak to them.
And who inspires you now?
Who inspires me now? Oh, goodness. I don't know. I just kind of do my thing right now and don't really, I don't know. The community, I would say, because I'm inspired by the community to continue to work. Because every time you think, oh, you know, you're getting beat up by the citizens, and then you'll run into someone who says, oh, thank you for doing this. If you didn't do this, we wouldn't be able to do this, or I wouldn't be able to do that. So I think the community.
So just one, one kind of conversation like that can wipe out like four or five bad ones, right?
Right, exactly. When you, when you actually talk to somebody and you know that what you're doing is actually helping people.
When you were growing up, did you want to be President of the United States, or a county commissioner, or a senator, or were you president of the student body, or?
Yes.
Yes?
I was president of the student body.
You were?
I was, but never wanted to be, you know, a government, in government. I never dreamed that I would be in government, ever. But I ended up here, but I was, I was involved. I was homecoming queen, and I was president of the student body and treasurer.
A homecoming queen. We're talking about a homecoming queen.
Yes, that's right, exactly. So I've always kind of been a people person.
Was your husband the quarterback of the football team?
No, very shy. He's quite opposite of me.
Well, you know, opposites attract and all that, right?
Right, right, right.
How does he, how does he handle it when you're out in public and people come up to you and go, Agnes, or Commissioner, I need to ask?
He leaves. He just goes, if we're at Walmart, he'll go shop, do his thing. He'll go to the car and wait on me.
Oh, he does?
My son refuses to go to Walmart with me.
Really?
Yes, just refuses.
All right. So as I said, this is my second trip to West Virginia. Where in, where in Lewis County are you taking me out to dinner? What are we having? What are some great regional dishes?
Oh, goodness.
Yes.
Time Bistro is on Main Street downtown.
Okay.
Which is phenomenal. They have a lot of great food. My favorite is their bistro fries.
Bistro fries, tilapia.
Yes, and their steak hoagie without the bun. And it's phenomenal. Their bistro fries have garlic and Parmesan cheese, and, and just a special blend of their own secret herbs, and it's fantastic.
Is there any regional dish? Is there anything you can only get in Lewis County?
That's the thing.
What are, what are, what is, what's special in Lewis County that is better there than anywhere else?
The bistro fries. They're, they're special just to them. And they've actually, the chefs there have won-
It sounds a little bit like poutine or, you know, disco fries.
Yeah, possibly, but they're, and they have a special blend of sauce that everybody loves. I personally don't like the sauce, but I do like the fries. But they've won several awards, even on a national level, as for to be the chef. So they're phenomenal. And we have, do have a little local family-type restaurant as well. It's called Giovanni's, and they do a lot of home-cooked meals in the community. So that a lot of people really enjoy.
So I have to go back to this, because I just wrote this down as a note, and, and I realized, you are, were you Agnes Queen, the homecoming queen?
I was actually Agnes Quinn, the homecoming queen.
Quinn, all right.
Quinn, yes.
So it was after you got married, you truly became a queen?
That's right. And my husband, actually, when he proposed to me, said, I want to make you a queen for a lifetime.
Aw, so that won you over. Did you hesitate? Or said, yeah, I'm fine?
It was funny. I thought it was cute.
Who can turn that down, right?
Right.
So we, this is the Good Government Show. We always bring it back to good government. Give me an example of a really good government project you're proud of that you worked on over your time.
Currently, I'm working on broadband.
Okay.
And if you can believe this or not, regular telephone service. I have a community in my county, about 2,800 homes, that actually their phone system doesn't work, let alone internet, because the cabling and everything is copper, and it doesn't work. So I have been for three years fighting, coming to these meetings. We're talking with the FCC and NTIA to try to get better service to those areas. And with the ARDOF coming through, which is a rural opportunity fund, to get broadband to those areas, and we're still not seeing it happen. So I continue to work to try to help those people. I mean, their phone, they don't get cell service at all, and their telephones. We had a lady who called 911, and the service was so bad on her landline that they could not understand what she needed and had to send all agencies. They had to send everyone. And where this lady lives in southern Lewis County is 45 minutes to an hour away from citizens downtown. So that they, they don't have service until they get almost into Weston, which is our largest municipality. So it was, it's a lot to send those agencies there out of the way as well.
All right. Well, Agnes Queen of Lewis County, a real queen.
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much for stopping by. Good luck with your, good luck with your highway.
Thank you very much.
There was, I think I mentioned this, there was another highway, the King Coal Highway, I think. So just curious, if you, if you know the answer. You seem to be under highway construction in West Virginia. What, what causes that? How did that come about?
The highways being built, actually, Corridor H, the reason it was being built was after, after 9/11, they wanted an exit route for those in Washington DC to be able to, to get out of Washington DC quickly.
Okay.
And when that happened, they actually came into our different communities along that corridor and dropped off these trailers that were full of supplies that could help somebody.
And is there any connection between that and the King Coal Highway that's under construction?
No, the King Coal Highway is being built in southern where the coalfields are. And that is being built to help those coal counties that lost a lot of revenue and job markets and things of that nature.
All right, so two different things.
Correct.
But still two different highways in West Virginia. Again, Agnes Queen of Lewis County, West Virginia, thank you for coming by.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a great day.
I want to tell you what our friends at the LHD Academy of Science are doing. The LHD Academy is the National Association for Local Health Department Data Collectors. Through the Academy of Science, county health directors are coming together to measure their county health issues the same way. Here's the problem. There are over 3,000 counties in the US, and they all count differently. We live in a data-driven world. We need all the public health data to be counted the same. Let's say you want to see if your community is overweight, or vaping, or in other ways, less healthy than your neighboring counties. To determine this, you'll need to measure these problems the same.